Call to me in order, please. Everybody join us, please.
Vigilance.
Vigilance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Afternoon, the board meeting. Something many people favor over evening, but if you have to work all day, it's better. But it also allows us opportunity to hear people that might not be available in the evening. Anyway, our first item of business is the approval of amendments in the March 21st, 2017, regular meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Amen.
Ms. Smith, say it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, sir.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next. Okay, statutory and regular meetings. We both go back to this. Thank you. All right. All right. On the public comment, that's our first section. Typically, people sign in, but I guess they've signed their just advised that they want to be on the agenda as a vote of true, Brenda.
Did you sign? Who signed in?
Well, we have Mr. Watts and Mr. Hatfield here that have signed in on the public comment. But these, we have Cindy Rusk and others possibly that have signed in also, and this listed here as public comments. I'm trying to...
Right.
Should that be under the, right below it?
Well, I didn't want to call it a presentation or report because it was actually parents coming with public comments, I guess.
Well, what we're going to do, we're going to allow everybody to give their comment. I'm just trying to understand the, what you want. First, though, we're going to go with our public comment, people who have signed in today. Now, and the reason I say that to you is, is that everyone knows people who have just signed in and aren't on the agenda, which would just be Mr. Watts and Mr. Hatfield, may speak to us, but we can't speak back to you. But we do listen to you, and we've had some conversations about the topic already, so I think we'll be okay on that. On the other individuals that are going to be speaking to us, we are able to converse with you, and we'll leave that when the time comes. But we'll start with Mr. Watts. Are you all going to do it, both?
Oh, we can.
Mr. Bob Watts?
We can, I guess.
And Zach Hatfield, how you all want to do it?
We can.
And they're going to discuss the update on the track and the field at the high school.
Okay, thank you. One of the things I want to comment on first of all is that our Lincoln County High School track team had its first meet last night. And one of my young ladies finished, Olivia Lykan finished third in the high hurdles. Alex Atkins finished sixth in the long jump. Josh Burton finished sixth in the hundred meters. Dylan Smith finished fourth in the high jump. And our four by one hundred meter relay team for boys, Zane Cummings, Josh Burton, Alex Atkins, and Dylan Smith won the event. So, so the kids are doing well, they're working hard, and I just wanted to make that part of the public record that they have, they have produced. Now, we may not do anything the rest of the year, but sometimes. Okay. But anyway, I, I just wanted to, to mention the fact that we have some updates on what can be done with the track and some information, and we just wanted to make the board aware that we are available to do that. My friend, Mr. Hatfield, is with an engineering company, and he has bids and estimates and he has the facts. He, this is not, you know, his, the stuff he has is not just hearsay. It's, it's the real deal, and he can make comments on what can be done, and then we'll leave this with Mr. Gosney, and we'll make arrangements for him to see all this as it's, and help, you know, make, in any way we can to help progress from here.
Those are good. Mr. Hatfield.
Thank you, guys, first and foremost, for giving us the opportunity. And I would like to say that this is not anything, as far as engineering on my part, this is looking out and trying to really see that there's no cost associated with redundant work or items that may need to be addressed if there is an installation of a track. So, just kind of as a friendly gesture, whatever, I was looking through some opportunities to maximize this construction phase as far as the grading and the site drainage that would accommodate a track in the future, so that there wouldn't be any rework or costs associated with that. So, it's an opportunity to really address the design before the construction phase and eliminate any added cost, and really, you know, provide you with a cost-efficient option of installing a track along with the athletic field. So, nothing more to add, but I do appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe, for speaking with us.
Okay. Okay, now we'll go down to the public comment section of this agenda. Okay, first, we have Cindy Rusk, who wants, she's a Hamlin parent concern. Ms. Rusk.
I want to thank everyone for hearing what I have to say today, and I'd like to request that it be confidential because of, you know, some things that I have to say. I'm here about my grandchild. She is in special ed department, and I'm not a very good speaker, I'm nervous, I've never done this before, but I did write it down, so if you don't mind me speaking from what I've written, I'd like to read you what I've written.
It is all right, we're doing it.
Just going to say, we, this is not confidential, this is a public meeting. As you can see, Sean's here with the paper. Anything you say in this meeting is subject to be published in the paper or disseminated by anyone else, so take that into consideration in what you say. We have no control over confidentiality of that.
I don't care for myself, it's just, you know, just for my granddaughter, so.
And it's videoed, and the video will be up live tomorrow. That's routine.
All right, well, okay, well then...
You know, we really don't know the nature of your comments, so it's...
Okay, well, it concerns my grandchild and her need, her needs at school, and we have a concern here, and I'd like to be able to read what my concerns are.
Well, you're certainly free to do.
Okay. All right, and I'm, you know, like I say, I'm just going to be reading from what I've written because I'm not a very good speaker, but, and I'm very nervous, but. My granddaughter Anna is six years old and has a diagnosis of autism, PDD, NOS, and Anna attends Hamlin pre-K eight and is in Ms. Aggins' kindergarten class. There are only nine students in the class, so there is no aid. When Anna transitioned from pre-K, we agreed to try kindergarten without the use of an aid. We were hoping for improvement. At the end of preschool, Anna was working on bathroom training. This was difficult because Anna has a medical diagnosis of encephalitis. She has reduced sensation of the need to use the bathroom. We believe this would be resolved by the time she entered kindergarten. This didn't happen to be the case. Anna still requires help with bathroom issues, Anna also has safety issues. She sometimes is unpredictable and impulsive. She has many times pulled free and will run wherever she is. She is not aware of her surroundings and has run into the streets several times. She will also wander. Her mind will become preoccupied, and she will wander to wherever she is curious. She has no fear of dark and doesn't see danger the way typical children her age do. Anna also has meltdowns. Sometimes they can be predicted, sometimes not. These usually, but not always, occur during times of transition, not just from one place to another, but also from one activity to another. Safety is also an issue here because she will simply shut down and refuse to move until she has herself under control. Anna's pediatrician, Dr. Maddox, is working with us and is in agreement with us on bathroom and safety issues. She has provided a letter telling of Anna's needs for an aid for medical and safety reasons. As a child on the autism spectrum, Anna has other issues, sensory issues, social issues, and issues with trust. She doesn't respond to everyone, and it's rare that she will attach herself to someone. Jennifer Wiley happens to be one of the few that Anna will respond to. She seems to have just the right touch concerning children. She knows when to be firm, when to be soft, and when to be fun. I suppose many people are capable of being an aide, but not all can connect with children in a positive way to get the most results and also show the child that they are special and loved. Anna simply loves Jennifer and will respond to her way of caring and teaching. Jennifer did an amazing job being an aide and caregiver to little Emma over the past years, and I feel that Lincoln County Board of Education and Special Ed Department is truly fortunate to have her as an employee. Our goals for Anna are to be in a regular classroom with same-age peers and receive instruction from the teacher. Anna has shown that she's capable of learning what other typical six-year-olds learn. We feel with the help of an aide who can help her on task and keep, help her with her particular special needs, that Anna can successfully attend school and be an example of what Anna and the school system can accomplish. Anna entered kindergarten without an aid, and it was very quickly apparent that she needed help with bathroom issues, meltdown, safety, and instruction in the classroom. I'd like to thank the school system for providing someone to go in the classroom daily and helping Anna with her special needs because they have, Jennifer has gone in and really stepped up and helped even when she wasn't her age, she has stepped up and helped Anna anytime. And I said, as a result, Anna has blossomed with the wonderful teacher and Jennifer to help her. But on the same token, this has also shown that the need for Anna to have an aide has been established. As of May 2017, I will have successfully put five children through the Lincoln County school system. My husband Greg and I believe in being involved and responsible parents. We work with teachers, volunteer our time, we volunteer coaching in the classrooms through booster clubs, even taking children into our homes to feed and watch over until time for practices. As the grandparents of Anna, we will do the same. All we're asking for is for help for this child at school to help make her be the best that she can possibly be. I see Anna being a huge success story, but we need help to help her. We are certainly committed to it. And I also have a letter from Cindy Schimpf stating that she took me aside and told me that she witnessed out the window Erica, her mommy, dropping Anna off, and Anna pulling free and running right down the street with cars, you know, it's, and so she told Erica to simply park behind the principal for safety reasons, so they know that there's a need, that there is a safety need there with Anna. And I have copies of texts between myself and the teacher showing where the teacher has to text me and ask me, please come and help with Anna because the aide's not there and I have to go help with Anna in the bathroom. She has no aide in the classroom because they're only nine children, and, you know, in first grade, there won't be an aide. I think they only have aides for kindergarten rooms anyway. And I also have a letter from Anna's doctor, Dr. Maddox, showing that she, you know, telling that she feels that Anna needs an aide to help with her issues, safety, and her private issues. I have these, if you'd like them.
You can give them to us. Have you, or have you, the mother, have anyone discussed all these issues with the school, with the, with the principal, with the special education director? Have these issues been brought forward and this information been provided to them?
Her last IEP, it's almost time for her new IEP, because like I said, her last IEP meeting was coming out of preschool into kindergarten, and we, we really felt like these issues were going to be resolved with the bathroom issues. And at the time, we, we really didn't know about how the transitioning was going to go. We had no idea about how the safety issues were going to go because here in the preschool, it's very controlled, and there are a lot of hands-on people to help, and, you know, as you get to the grade school, it's a little different. And so, we weren't sure exactly what all the issues were going to be, but it's apparent now, it's a...
Well, but my question is, the information that you've just shared with us, have you shared that information with the principal and with the special education director?
Yes, the principal definitely is aware. She has been the one that sent the aide down to the classroom to help her.
Well, but has, is she aware of those?
No, we have an IEP meeting coming up.
Okay.
And, and so, I just, you know, so we just wanted to be aware that the need was there. I, I am aware that there's going to be a difference in the amount of aids at Hamlin pre-K eight, and, you know, I was told that there probably would not be an aide there. So, that's, that's my concern. That's her mother's concern and her father's concern.
Well, let's see, because we're, at this point, the superintendent has made various recommendations on reduction in staff.
I see.
The Board of Education has not acted upon those.
Right.
Now, at some point in time, we will, but prior to that, each of those individuals has, that have received a letter to either be terminated or to be transferred, or whatever the case may be, have been given the opportunity to have a hearing. They, I think those are due by the April the fourth or four. They have to go April the fourth to request a hearing. At those hearings, then they may, one, the Mr. McKiff and his staff will present their information as to why this should occur.
Right.
Not just in this instance, but all of them.
Mm-hmm.
At the same time, any employee who asked for a hearing will be able to give their side of it. At that point, they can also get parents, grandparents, anybody else that they feel that adds to their case to speak at that hearing.
Okay.
And at that time, you may ask questions, things like that. Both sides will be doing that. And at the conclusion of that, some, probably not that day or so, but if you, sometime before May, I guess, the Board of Education will act on each one of his recommendations. So, really, we've been, we've been advised by our council, we aren't to, right now, we're impartial because we haven't heard both sides of the story.
Right.
We just know that Mr. McKiff has made certain recommendations, and he will have to share those and his justification for those with us. Now, if a person asks for a hearing, but if they don't, because that's their opportunity to say, this is why you need me and why this is not a good idea.
Right.
And once again, they can have as many witnesses as they want, and oftentimes, that's what they'll do. They'll get parents and all that kind of to be present. Now, if they don't ask for a hearing, then all we're going to hear is one side of the story before we act at some point down the road.
Right, okay.
Okay. But the reason I was asking is, not if you have provided this information to either Mrs. Ferguson or to the special ed director here, if, if you've provided that to them, so it's possible that if they don't have this information, if they're not knowledgeable of this already, then maybe that could change how their recommendation. I don't know that it will or won't, I'm just saying, they need to be aware of everything that you're going to say.
Right, I do have copies for them, and I, I was under the impression that these were things that we brought up in IEP meeting, which she hasn't had yet.
Well...
But I did tell Chastity that I was coming, and I told her why I was coming, so...
Well, that...
I was not advised not, to do it at a different time, so I didn't, you know...
All I'm saying is, the guard, the parent of the guardian, if there's new circumstances that come about, they need to make those available so that the principal and the special education department is aware of those things, because ultimately, what's, what happens in this is they are sharing information to Mr. McKiff, and he makes his recommendations based on what he is hearing.
Right.
If they aren't aware of certain things, certain circumstances, then maybe, I'm just saying, I don't know that it would, maybe they already know this, would it change their recommendation or his? I don't know that either.
Right.
I'm just saying, you just need to make sure, everyone does, that you let the people at the school level know these things before, you know, you come to us because, you know, we're...
Well, as I say, they do know. I mean, they, they do know because they sent the aide to the classroom all year long to help with them, and so they are aware of the situation, and they just need to be held.
Well, once again, I don't know whether they know all the things you just told us or not, but I would suggest that that be made known to Mrs. Ferguson and to share with her, if you'd like that to be known. Maybe someone would like to come and make us know that you're the special ed director.
Sure, yes.
So that she'd know that.
Mm-hmm.
Once again, I'm not saying that this would have any bearing or impact on the recommendation ultimately, but should there be a hearing, these kind of things are going to come out. And at that hearing, we're going to hear their justification why they think certain act, actions should occur.
And so, people can come to a hearing to, like, support them?
If the person asks for a hearing.
If they ask for a hearing, okay.
Yeah, it's up to the employee. They've already received a certified letter.
Right.
Advising them that they've been, are subject to transfer, termination, there's numerous people...
I'm not sure if that's the, I don't know.
Well...
I'm just, I was just concerning, you know, this, this is Anna, because I, this is our concern for Anna.
Right, but it's up to the employee. They get a certified letter, and in addition to that, I believe Mr. Limble, the assistant superintendent, has gone to everybody who has been, has received some type of letter.
Right.
He has gone and met with them.
Okay.
And given them this, and said, okay, yeah, here's what's being, you know, what's being recommended by the superintendent, who he's going to recommend. That, and in that letter, it states to them that they have an opportunity to be heard by the Board of Education with a hearing prior to any action.
Okay.
But it's up to them to ask for a hearing.
I see.
And they have to go April the fourth to do it. If they do ask for a hearing, then both sides will present their cases. Mr. McKiff and his staff will present their reasons.
At which point it will be an appropriate time for me to come with Jennifer, or who, if she wants me to, whoever wants me to.
First of all, Ms. Wiley would have to ask for a hearing.
Right, right. I didn't know that she had her hat, and I did not know that.
Well...
I would just advise that I could come and do, and I...
Well, you can.
This is my first go-around. I don't know what I'm doing. I just want to be sure everybody knows about...
Well, and I understand that.
My concern for Anna.
All I'm saying is that the forum for that really should be at a hearing, if the employee wants one, but now, if Mrs. Wiley doesn't want a hearing, that's, I mean, that's up to her.
Right, well, she still has time, right?
Well, until April the fourth.
Okay.
And if she wants a hearing, those will be on April the sixth, is that correct? There, that's when the board would have hearings. And now, it's up to her.
I see.
Because she then decides who she wants to have as her witnesses.
Okay.
She may want you all, I expect, if she asked for a hearing, she probably would.
Yeah.
But it's up to her. If she doesn't want you as a witness, then you are going, she gets to call her witnesses, they're who she chooses.
Right. And part of the stuff, too, that I have gotten together here, it's just things that I was getting together for her IEP anyway. It's not just that I went and got all this stuff for this meeting. It's not, it's, what I've got prepared because she's going to have another IEP meeting, and things have changed so much.
And that's why I suggested that you share that information with the special education director prior to a hearing.
We just had, we actually, about two weeks ago, we had kind of an amended, I don't know what you would call, I don't know, what was that called? Was it kind of an amended IEP or eligibility? Yeah, yeah, so we, we kind of touched on it a few days.
Well, all I'm saying is that if I were here, what I would recommend is that you make sure she's aware of all these things you're telling us.
Mm-hmm.
That way, if they're, I don't know if that'll change anything or not. It may not. They may already be aware of these things. I don't know. And we'll find those things out if and when there's a hearing. But I'm just saying, if, it would be fortuitous for you to go ahead and provide that information to Mrs. Ferguson and her, and that way, whether it alter what they recommend to Mr. McKiff, I don't know.
Right.
But it might, but if not, at least they're made of, they've been made aware of it. But I understand what you're saying. The IEP meetings aren't going to happen until after all these are over.
Right, and so that was my concern, that maybe if I kind of gave, that, that maybe, you know...
But once again, if, even if, let's assume that the transfer, this does happen and this, the aide isn't there, and I don't know if it's going to happen or not, let's say that happens, and then there's a, you have an IEP meeting that happens later in the year, and at the IEP meeting, it's justified that there's going to have to be an aide there with that child, then there's, that's what the board would then, they would, we would receive a recommendation to provide an aide for that class, for that student. So, just because something happens now doesn't prevent it, in an IEP meeting at the end of the year, is that that...
Right, right, I do understand that.
Or that when school starts next year, circumstances might change to where we need an aide, if we might not need now.
Right, I understand that I can, that I can request an IEP when we feel we need to, you know, if we might need to update, I, I, we understand that.
Right. All I'm saying is, whatever action happens now could be altered in the future by IEP meetings, where the information being provided at the end of the year, that we necessitate maybe an aide at a class or a teacher somewhere, that isn't now, or when school starts, circumstances could change that would make...
Yes.
Change those then.
Mm-hmm.
Or failing to provide the information now through the proper channels might result in a delay in things taking place that can't occur until after the IEP meeting.
Right.
I, I think the answer is, it doesn't hurt to get this information to the right people right now.
Yes.
It may not change what's going to happen.
Right.
If there's a hearing on any employee.
Right.
It may not change anything regarding personnel now, but it could have an effect.
Right.
But if you don't provide it...
Right, I actually have some copies with their names on, so, you know.
Okay.
I'm just getting it all gathered up, so...
But Ms. Russ, you weren't wrong in coming here. The public is always welcome any time to come and speak to us, at any time, so you were not wrong in coming here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you have any more questions about?
Um, I don't.
Okay, thanks for coming.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mitch.
Okay. Now, the next one, I have Hamlin PK eight staff and parent staff concerned, so anyone who wants to speak, you're going to have to come up and identify yourself, because I don't know who you are here. Just come up and identify yourself, and you make some predictions.
All right, my name's Michelle Fungley, and we were going to have more from the school, but they weren't able to leave because one o'clock, and they're working.
Okay.
Um, mine's the same concern. I'm just concerned about an aide for next year, and I understand what you said to her, but I don't want to lose Jennifer. My son is a type one diabetic, and he's known her since preschool. And I'm nervous, too. I'm not a, I'm not a public speaker, so...
Don't be nervous around her.
All right. Um, but anyway, my son's known her since preschool. She's familiar with him. She's able, um, we don't have nurses every day, so she's our aide, and she makes sure that his sugar's getting checked. I'm sorry. We love her. She takes really good care of my child, Anna, and so many others at the school, and I would hate to lose her. Hamlin needs an aide. You know, an aide is not just provided for one child, but it's provided for the school. That's what I was understanding. I have a long letter here. I can read to you how much she does. I do work at the school. I'm a parent teacher coordinator, and I don't usually cry, but it's been one of those days. But, um, I can read it to you, but basically, it's, she's, she's great. She does all kinds of stuff for my child. I see her doing things for all kinds of children at the school, and I just hate for Hamlin to lose her. Um, and if we lose her and then we have an IEP meeting later and we get somebody else, it could probably be a good one, you know? I want to have Jennifer, and I hope that you all will consider keeping her, because she's really good for Hamlin. And I have copies, too, if you all want this, but, um, do you want me to read it to you, or do you want me? I can, but I don't know.
You, well, feel free to do either one. If you want to read, if you can, if you just want to leave a copy, then that'll be clear with the appropriate people. Uh, I'll just reiterate what I said a while ago.
I know, that's what, yeah.
Should there be a hearing?
Yes.
The employee, in this case, Ms. Wiley requests a hearing, she could ask you to be a witness, those documents that you're speaking of could be entered into evidence.
I can do that. I just wanted to make sure I came up here and let you know that we do love Jennifer, and she is a good aide, and Hamlin will use to keep her.
Well, I understand that, and you're certainly free to state that anytime you want to. Uh, but I, you know, just the procedural things, hopefully, I've seen, because when we have these hearings, we hear both sides, because the...
Absolutely.
The, Mr. McKiff, you know, he works with his staff as to why certain actions should occur, and in, at that, if there is a hearing for specific people, then we hear those things. But conversely, we hear the other side of it, too. But we'll listen to you here, too.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else?
I don't know.
We'll probably send you a hand.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, does anyone else that wants to speak to this topic or anything about that, but from Hamlin PK? Thanks for that all for you.
Oh, no, I can speak if you want.
Once again, you all have heard, you know, what I've told...
I'm not, I'm not a, I'm a disability advocate, but I also have a child in this county. That's a sophomore that is receiving special education services.
Well, once again, if you would like to speak, you may. If not, I...
I would just like to make a comment, if that's okay.
Well, just identify yourself, please, and you may.
You won't have to overlook my mode of dress. I just got out of class. I'm also a college student, and I thought the meeting was at six o'clock tonight, so I'm sorry. I apologize for my attire. I've been a disability, my name's Kelly Miller. Most of you all know who I am, or know my face. I'm a disability advocate, and I have been for eighteen years for the state of West Virginia. Um, I recently resigned my job, and now I work for West Virginia Parent Training and Information Center, doing trainings throughout the state to both businesses and individuals on IMPs, special ed law, that type of thing, to try to build a better self-advocacy group in the state for parents, that they can come and advocate for their children and make sure services are being provided. Um, Lincoln County, through my job, has been one of my counties through the state. It was one of my counties for twelve years, and in my current job, it is also one of my counties. I receive phone calls, emails, texts, letters every day from parents crying out for help. I receive phone calls, emails, texts, letters every day from parents crying out for help. And Mr. McKipp and I have discussed this, Mr. Limble, Ms. Lowe. I would like to see a better support system in this county for parents. I would like to see a better interaction and actual teamwork, which is what 2419 and IDEA says should occur. Working together as a team for the best of these students, making sure that services are being provided. And I think we're lacking that a little bit in Lincoln County. I think it could be tweaked a little. I don't know how to fix that problem. Every, every single thing I've come up with has failed. Um, I collaborated last year with Dr. Lowe. We went around to every school system trying to do IEP training in some schools. You have to excuse me. I've got a really bad voice right now. That kind of thing. We didn't have a lot of people show up, a lot of parents. And it, I think it goes back years, not only this board and this special ed director. It's just, it's bad blood through the years between parents and the school system. And I mean, if you're going to be honest, I mean, it's there. And I think there has to be some way to figure this out, to make it better. You know, just like, for an example, with Ms. Russ. When she goes to the teacher, you know, the teacher tells her one thing. You go to the principal, the principal tells you something else. You come to Ms. Lowe, they tell you one thing, and then somebody else tells you something else. Nobody knows what to do, because not every parent understands the law and understands what their rights are. And when you open up a 2419 and read it, unless you're familiar with that terminology and that verbiage, it's, it's confusing. Parents don't understand it. Parents don't get it. So when they come and they have an issue, whatever they're told by the administrators or the teachers, they think, okay, this is right. Well, unfortunately, not always is that the case. It's not right. So I don't know how to fix this. But I think that, you know, I had this conversation with Mr. McKipp. You need to be aware that this is going on in this county. By hit the law, I can't give you names. I can't give you that information. But I assure you, the complaints are real, and they're out there. And there has to be a way to fix this issue. There has to be. I don't know how to do it. Like I said, everything I've thought of as a parent and as an advocate, it doesn't work. I don't know how to fix it. But there is an issue in this county when it comes to the relationship between parents and the school system, especially the special ed department.
Well, we're always receptive to any suggestions or recommendations you have. And what, for mine, for what you've just said, I understand you're having meetings at schools and parents aren't showing up.
Parents are afraid of retaliation, and retaliation is real.
Well, I would hope that that would be made aware of it. But we, you know, the communication has to be there, but if people don't come and voice their concerns or issues, then, and either administration or nor the board can, can act on those. But anybody has any suggestions, recommendations, what, how to better that, you know, we'd be open to that. I'm sure Mr. McKipp would. But, uh, you know, just by virtue of the fact that they're going out and having meetings there tells me that at least they're, if they're making an attempt to do that. Now, how can it be made better to, uh, get people to come? You know, that's where, once again, if anybody has any ideas, we'd be, I'm sure these people would be willing to hear those and act on them. But, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else from Hamlin PKA? Did you have a letter?
Yes.
Michelle, you have another copy of it.
I do. I actually have a letter from Mustam to.
No, I made a copy for you to keep for later.
Oh, yeah. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Does no one else want to speak on that topic? Okay. All right then. Uh, let's move on now to presidential reports. You gathering all that up, Bill? You gathering everything up? Okay. All right. Next, we have presidential reports. We have Greg Osney and Jonah Hall. This is Central Office Radio System. Jonah, are you going to speak first?
Yeah, we're just contacting and that's it.
Okay. You're free to do your thing.
There's a reason.
Hey, times.
He's a known preacher.
I need it back. I need the preaching.
Rowdy's going to pass the offering plate, so.
Thanks, sir.
I'm about to use that one, which they'll preach to me.
Turn the microphones off. Go ahead, Jonah.
I'm sorry, I'm going to take.
Just about the, uh, Mr. McKipp has already kind of made you guys aware of what's going on. First, let me start by saying that we have, uh, had multiple issues with our current phone system. We'll say something. We just listened. Oh, yes. It's true.
I think we all agree with that.
Everybody knows it's, uh, multiple issues, and those are outlined on the second page. Uh, that's kind of how I'll start, lead into this. Uh, Greg and I have discussed this multiple times. Voicemail not working, uh, that's frustrating for public, for, uh, teachers, you know, out at the schools calling in, not being able to leave us a message. Uh, deadlines, uh, there's multiple attempts to get a call out. I know Brenda just talked this morning. She tried four or five different times to, to get a call out, and you have to hang up, and, you know, do that. Uh, the auto attendant frequently does not work, so when people call in, they can't dial the right extensions, and you don't know if anybody's calling in until you see the light blinking. Uh, so, uh, and the Avaya company, who actually owns our phones, has gone bankrupt. So, uh, I don't foresee any support. Don't see any support for those systems being available out there if that company has gone bankrupt. Uh, another overarching theme, and I'll kind of come back to this, is that, uh, after 2020, E-Rate will no longer be funding POTS, which is plain old telephone service. I didn't make that term up.
Put that ass on there.
Plain old telephone service. That's it. That's how he really calls it. It's POTS. POTS, yes. POTS with an S. Uh, Greg and I, uh, got together and did some, did some talking. Uh, if you go back to the first page, uh, you have a graphic here. The graphic would only let me put seven circles, so I had to add Hamlin out on the side. That's why it's out there by itself. Uh, but currently, Lincoln County High School, when Lincoln County High School was built, uh, the Cisco Call Manager System was installed there, and, um, that's what has been serving that school since that time. Uh, last May, I think, a system was ordered for West Hamlin Elementary. That system has since been installed recently, um, and it is now up and running. And, and basically, what this does is that this system, uh, where Lincoln County High School would be our hub, um, we will have all buildings in the county connected, okay? Uh, we'll, we'll be able to, um, communicate, uh, you know, via extensions. Instead of having to dial numbers to go to schools, you know, we would simply dial an extension. Jeff could sit in his office and dial an extension to Debbie Dingus's, uh, office there in Harts if you wanted to. Uh, that's, that's kind of the system that we're looking at. It's, it's a call manager system. And the other piece to that is that, um, the, the improved communication, again, Mr. McKipp could sit in his office, and he could make an announcement to the whole county if he wanted to. So that's, that's the kind of, and, and I'll be honest, I, Greg can probably tell you more on, on the functions, uh, of, of this Cisco system, what it can do. There's multiple functions. Greg?
Now, Dan, you're saying that all of our schools presently have this system already?
No. The only, the only, the only school that, only two schools that have worked, have installed, uh, functioning right now are Lincoln County High School and West Hamlin.
And the equipment's already coming in for Duval. Duval currently has no phones whatsoever, any of the rest.
Oh, the intercom system.
The intercoms. I want to integrate all of this together for you. Uh, basically, the call managers, Cisco telephone is what it's called. Cisco is the leader in all your telephone, ethernet, and all of this stuff. We're going to be running this across the broadband. You hear all that talk about broadband. So what, what Jonah's been able to do is bring all of our lines up to where our broadband connections are. We've got tremendous amount of bandwidth now. We usually have, so that's amazing in itself. And this will run across that line. In other words, call manager will be, they'll still, uh, you'll still dial West Hamlin extensions, whatever number it is, that doesn't change. But what we're doing is routing that, using Route Table, routing it through the internet, and it knows by the Route Table to take that extension to West Hamlin or wherever. So you still have all those functions. It also has a, the functions in there where you have voicemail. You also can have this function where they'll send it to your phone. All these features you have that's built into this now, we don't ever have. Other part, most hybrid systems, like the Ivana and all these different hybrids, are considered a hybrid system. They're part analog and part digital. The problem with these is your limitations. It's your voicemail box. One of the reasons we have the issue with voicemail boxes here, only four people at a time can check a voicemail box. With this system, it's unlimited. You have a thousand people checking their voicemail boxes, and it doesn't interfere with anything. So you have all those features added to it. You have some faults built into it. Uh, if, if for some reason it goes down, automatically goes, and you still have an emergency line between schools. Plus the fact that we're going to be implementing, uh, the fact that things and all those, we'll, we'll keep a few analog lines. And that's just for emergency situations. Currently, what we're paying, what we're doing, what we're paying out is tremendous. The features we have here, just an example, Gunn Valley, we've replaced three PA systems. Gunn Valley, called the power surge is a different thing. And they're eighteen thousand dollars a piece when you go to replace this stuff. This is all built in to your phone system. Your bell schedules, all that, we can integrate all that into the system. Uh, I can do the intercom system, all that. I don't have to interrupt the whole classrooms now, go directly to the phone. If it needs to be private, they just pick up the phone. If not, just broadcast in a whole room. So all these features we're bringing in, and we're going to save a tremendous amount of money on trying to keep these old antiquated systems that's, that's just outdated. And we don't want West Hamlin right now bopping sound on it. They've been bankrupt for years, and we don't even have it documented. We can't add anything to it. So that's the purpose why we went to West Hamlin. West Hamlin now comes on rooms to rent. Teachers are, they're just, they're just, they're just, well, now they have communication for them with the office. All they got to do is pick up the phone and dial an office extension so that you're going there. So we're taking that factor away. We're also, uh, you won't have to deal with, uh, bell system. Sometimes you have a bell system over handled right now. You're going to go in, physically put little switches in and set up all your bell schedules. All this will be done across the ethernet. You don't do anything. Just log in, make your changes. As teachers change positions, one of the things that, voicemail boxes, things like that, when they change positions, you actually just go in and you change, make the change there. You don't have to change the phone. And now the new teacher comes, you just add a new teacher in. The other feature is you also have an ID number where no one can use that phone unless they have an ID number. So that limits, uh, just the, so we had here years ago, somebody ordered fifty pizzas, you know. I was into the vocation part. So just so much features. And then the other part, if you look at, if you look at the page where Mr. Atkins has done here with the price breakdown, it's tremendous price data breakdown if you look at it. We're going to get what they call a PRI line. Now, a PRI line, it, it's called a primary line, is that it can come with, it comes with twenty-three actual dedicated phone lines. And PRI line actually is a, it's a, it's a network type line that we can usually, we can take off of E-Rate. So we're setting ourselves up for the future, be able to save a lot of savings. The PRI line, for twenty-three phone lines, if you look at this, that's seven hundred dollars.
Three fifty for twenty-three.
Three fifty for twenty-three?
Yeah.
But he's, actually has in here for the PRI, two PRI lines. So in essence, we're getting forty-three phone lines for seven hundred dollars. So if you look at the monthly difference when we do this, and then if you look at your annual difference, you're saving of fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's just what we're paying out for all these analog phone lines, or phone bills. So what we're going to be able to do, not only save this, I don't have to go call a company that's working on PA systems that charges two hundred dollars an hour to come out and tell me that I have to replace it, or I have to buy this part. It's outdated anyway. We should be putting money in it anyway.
What kind of hardware do we have to buy? Are the existing, will the existing telephones support this system?
That's the great part about this. What Mr. Atkins has done, we've got, and if you're familiar with E-Rate, and throughout the years, while I've been involved with, we've made tremendous advances using our E-Rate money. So all of our infrastructure that we have, all of our routers, all our switches, and all Cisco switches. Cisco switches are what they call PoE switches, power over ethernet. We, as a school system, has invested a lot of money, put this type of equipment in. So what he's got coming in this year, we're doing our upgrade already. We got thirty-seven fifty X switches out there that's a gig ports on every platform. So he's upgrading it now to where in June, we were replacing all this equipment to where we're going to have a gig to the desktop. We're going to have all this. So the infrastructure we have, all we got to do is buy a phone.
How many phones are requested? How many phones?
Faster, faster.
How many phones through the county?
How many phones?
Right.
How, how many, are you talking about?
He wasn't asking how many phones you're going to have to buy to do this.
Oh, 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 okay.
Over the course of a year, we're going to save all kinds of money. What's the cost upfront to get the phones? Where, where is that money going to come from?
Duval, uh, or the upgrade for here was seventeen thousand. That's everything, all the equipment.
Here being Central Office?
Central Office. Duval was twenty-two, I think.
Yeah, it was twenty-two. Thirteen for West Hamlin, which included the phones, and it also included the side card, a big, the big phone for the main office. And then it included the, what Cisco calls a smartnet account, which is the warranty, free year warranty on everything too.
Now, does
Basically, a phone's going to cost you about anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and thirty dollars a phone.
Now, is every room at West Hamlin going to have a, a funding already to be part of that cost?
It's all there, yeah. Even the, even the modular, where we had issues with, uh, emergency contact and having lockdowns, things like that, now they have it.
And Duval will have a phone in every classroom.
Duval will have a phone in every classroom, and also have the capabilities. They're having tremendous amount of problem with the PA system at Duval. We've been up there four to five times working on it. So it's going to take care of that, where we can do away with the PA system. It's now it's going to come to phone or IP speakers in the hallways.
And that phone that's, that phone that's in the classroom, they're already at the high school. That was installed when it was built. And, and that phone not only serves as the phone, but that, that, that is the speaker which your intercom announcements come through, your bells, your deans, all, all those types of things actually come through that phone. Now, as Greg mentioned, we do have to buy some IP speakers to put out in the hallways. We're currently working on that right now. Uh, the, the other major, uh, upgrade, just real quick, we do, we are going to put in a backup system, a backup server at Lincoln County High School. We've got a quote on that. We're looking at how we're going to fund that right now, which that, that way, we have, uh, since it's going to be such a large-scale operation, you have that backup server there. Any event, if one would go down, you'd have the backup to come up and.
Greg, if electric is off at a certain school, will the phone still work? Yes, it'll still go across the internet.
Okay.
It'll still go across the internet.
So down the electric, that was what I was.
Currently, we're the hub. That's, that's one of the things where we, this is Lincoln County High School. So everything is trunk back into it. When I say trunk, it comes, it's got some separate trunk back into Lincoln County High School, the router. So it knows in the routing how to get here. So Lincoln County High School, we back up the generator anyway. So it's got a generator system that's backed up.
So as long as there's electricity at Lincoln County High School, the system works.
And then
Some of that other stuff, I don't want you to.
And then if there's a, if there's a county-wide power outage, you still have the analog phone line that's coming in for the fax, that they can still be able to communicate on. One dedicated line, one dedicated line at each school.
Okay.
If you look at what we're doing, what we're doing here is as far as the spoke goes, this is, this is your heart, if you want to look at it as your heart. It's the same thing that the State Department's done, all your, all your issues around the state, whether you're at the State Board of Education, whether you're DNR, whoever you are, you're, you're, you're in a Cisco phone system that, if you're within that system, all I got to do is dial four, this extension like one oh four. I can call automotive over at Lincoln County. I don't have to dial all this number.
That question. Now, the, the schools that are colored here will have this. Now, the others, we aren't there yet, or.
Right, that's, we're not there yet. That's one that we're working towards next year. And as, and as we can fund them, we will just continue to order this equipment.
When you go to Hards, if you get right here to Hards, that, nothing but headaches. It's, it's, it's a lot worse than it is here. And, and they're, they would be my high priority afterwards, was to get Hards on this system, same phone system we have.
Now, where you say your all schools will be interconnected, you're saying down the road?
Yes, once, once we get this, the phone system in each building.
And what expenses we're going to have as far as upgrading our, uh, what's your smartnet account to keep everything up, and this will be E-Rate, we'll be, we can E-Rate. And we'll, based on what they're going to fund that year, if they go back to eighty percent or whatever, then we'll get the funding. If they stop it at ninety percent, most of all ours is around eighty. It's a range, I think it's a hundred percent. Yeah. Uh, most of ours is around eighty percent. So then if they fund it below, at eighty or below, we'll always get funded. Now, for some reason, they cut it back and only fund to ninety, which we had that happen one year, is, uh, we won't receive the funding for adding additions to it.
You know, another great piece to this aspect is the fact that during the install, we are not going to be without our phones.
No.
You know, thinking back to four years ago, you made the switch, you know, we had, we were out seven or eight days without any.
And one of the things that, uh, I, I try to get, uh, Michael Belcher, which is the one, and I've worked with the engineer, and I've worked with, you know, with West Hamlin and Lincoln County. I know Michael really well. He's really good. He comes in before we get the equipment, gets it all set up. We do the change out one day. We take it in room, plug it in, make sure it's plugged in Po switch on the, on the network. If it's plugged in, it lights up.
What type of schedule are you looking at on this particular one you're sharing with us today?
Are you talking about, so when is, when are you going to attempt to do this? Expectation of when it would be finished here. Here, uh, we're, equipment has been ordered, everything's been ordered, should be coming in within the next couple of weeks, couple, three weeks. So I would imagine, uh, May, June, that timeframe, we should be. Followed by a huge celebration. Followed by a huge celebration. That's right.
I would celebrate it.
I'll get it a while. Here's one, here's one of the things that Mr. Baker asked. This is a great thing about the Cisco. We, they have a portal you go into. So you go into the portal, and you tell them, I want this model phone, whatever. Now, I was looking at some phones here that actually are collared, and you, and it has the camera, and you do, you interact with everybody. You can do that. There's so much of that out there. But when you go into the portal, you go into the model you want to need, you put your number in there, how many you need. They go out and they find the cheapest thing they can find for you with a full Cisco warranty.
You have to be on a, a part of this network to access it, to call these, uh,
Extensions.
Extensions and all. So I can't be at home and dial four, six, nine, and get heavy.
Exactly, exactly. You have to be on superintendent.
They change them all the time.
Yeah, that'd be blocked.
The other, the other part of this, go ahead, Greg.
In this system also, we have IP phones. And the IP phone you just carry on your side, just like anything, not like the old cordless type system we had at Gunn Valley. It was a nightmare. It was, it was a nightmare.
Especially when people find the extension to it.
Say that again. You're going to be carrying around a portable phone that will be accessible through this?
Myself?
I mean.
You can, yes.
Oh, okay.
As long, as long as you're, as long as you're on the.
On that network. As long as you're on that network.
Yeah. It, it, it wouldn't work at home. It's going to be outside. You have to be outside.
Now, but if I go with the features that we have, and it'll also send your, 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 let's say I get, let's say you call like a voicemail on my phone. I don't get it. You remark it as urgent. So then it will email to you. So you got all these features that it's out there now that everybody's using that, that we can be able to have available to us. So not only can I get my voicemail sent to me, but, you know, you also get it on my phone, or it can get an email to me directly, so.
One thing Greg was mentioning there about, about the E-Rate part, the tools for schools as the, is the bunch. is the money that was used to upgrade the switches that we have coming in this year. Now, that money will hopefully still be there in July when they renew the Tools for Schools account. So I'm probably going to look, if we have the availability, I'm going to go ahead and play on funding all schools through Tools for Schools money this next fiscal year. And that's out of the state's pocket, not out of...
And when you've done your projections on the phone, that was just for this area, correct? For here?
For everywhere. That's, yeah, that's county-wide.
$56,000 county-wide.
Yeah. Yep. So, yeah, that's 56,000 annually. So I mean, you can see what money we do have invested, it will pay for itself right away.
Okay, board members, y'all have your questions?
I'll give you a rap. Y'all need one of those nice chart, dictionary, what's a gig? Switch?
I'll let you do my best, this one gets up front. Okay, thank y'all. Sounds good. Mr. McKip's kind of shared this with us a little bit. We didn't know this particular, now we know more than we knew. Okay, let's go to the administrative section. Have a motion to look at those, please. Mr. Baker, second to behind, Ms. Curry, Ms. McKip.
Okay, item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B, the annual certification of pay for JROTC instructors at Lincoln County High School for the 2017-2018 school year, which is attached. That's it, right on.
Okay, anybody have any questions on this two items? Is that an all yes on administrative items?
Yes.
Let's go to the finance section. Do you have a motion, please?
Say it.
Second to behind. Ray?
We have scheduled invoices that total $276,088 attached. That's all we have today.
What do you got? Is that an all yes on the finance item?
Yes.
Okay, comments concerning board members?
I just got one call in. The young lady from Lincoln County High School, we got her invited to Brown University. She's here this week. She arrived Saturday, started in on Sunday. And when she gets back, she's going to come forward and talk about her experience. Carry her album.
She was impressive. One of many. Do I answer any time?
Okay, I did bring a list. I know you were disappointed. I said... We've had some great success stories over at the high school this year, as Mr. Curry was just alluding to, this young lady and her opportunity to go to Brown University. With that said, I'd like to have another student recognition, another celebration. I wanted to check with the board today to see if we could possibly do that on May the 2nd. That's the night of a regularly scheduled board meeting. And we have many students with which we can celebrate that night. I was thinking, looking at 4:30 as a start for the activity. I mean, we've got Young Riders winners, we have our Governor of the Horseshoe winners, we just learned here this week. Our robotics teams, there was an article in the Herald Dispatch this morning regarding those kids winning the state championship. And we've got other state winners from the high school and field. Dr. Low, I keep forgetting, what's the name of the competition?
Skills USA.
Why, I have a brain cramp on it, I don't know, but the Skills USA competition is coming out there and have always been successful in that activity. So I anticipate that we'll have several students to celebrate and their families on their real partnership on May the 2nd.
So we're planning for that, and if anybody has a conflict or something, you can let Mr. McKip know and we'll modify from these things. Okay?
Sean, you'll be here.
I'm...
Good news, Greg.
From my sense.
We had finances a moment ago, I didn't know, Mr. Priest, if you were going to mention this or not.